The other new Commissioner Carpenter that he can't be here until seven thirty, he's got. Basketball?
Basketball.
Something. Yeah. So I think we can go ahead and start.
All right. We'll go ahead and call the Eskate Planning Commission meeting to order Thursday, January twenty sixth about seven oh two. Could we get a roll call?
Yeah, so we got Commissioner Hartley.
President.
Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Carpenter, it's gonna be late. Commissioner Sager.
Here.
Mr. Hawks.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Chairman Wheeler.
Here. All right. First thing, we have a new planning commission member and we have one that's gonna be here a little bit later. You wanna give yourself a introduction and introduce yourself to the group?
My name's Antonio. No say. I'm just, I'm just, I'm really just pleased to be here. I come from New York State, Buffalo, New York, and I'm all the way in Oregon and sitting on this commission is pretty cool, man. I've come a long way.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
How long you been in Oregon?
Six months.
Oh, whoa. Okay. All right, well. Welcome. We're happy to have you. And we'll get Commissioner Carpenter to introduce himself here whenever he shows up. First thing on the agenda is our approval of the December eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
I move you approve.
Second, we got a motion, we got a second. Is there any discussion needed on this? Okay, all those in favor, let's raise our right hands. Okay, he's got us. Motion carries. Today's a little bit out of the ordinary for our planning commission. Normally, we have public hearings and either subdivisions or annexations or planning related items, but today we're actually got a couple of discussions, first of which is childcare zoning issues. And we had a little bit of a entry level discussion on this last meeting, I believe it was, about some of the hurdles within the Eskate city limits and greater community about this. So I'll let the planning staff take over and we can dive into this.
Sounds good. And I don't know. Hi, Alan. Alan is another city planner who couldn't be here in person, who drafted this memo and did a lot of the background research informing the memo. So there might be some questions that I've got to defer to him on, but I can start us off. Yeah, just sort of framing this conversation, catching people up who weren't there at the last conversation that we had, although you might have, maybe that was when you attended, did we also do those interviews that evening? Yeah, so maybe you're already familiar, but yes, basically, at that December meeting, you all heard from one of the childcare providers here in town about all the various, you know, hurdles and barriers that there are to opening a childcare facility in the first place and then operating it. Some of those barriers obviously are out of the city's control. Some of those barriers are related to our regulations, our, and specifically our zoning regulations and like development code requirements. And so at that meeting, you all kind of unanimously agreed, this is something the city should take a look at. What are options that we have to reduce any barriers that we might currently have in our existing policies and codes? Reduce those barriers for childcare facilities. So we started taking, the planning team started taking a little look into what do other cities do in terms of just allowing childcare in certain zones in their city? And also additional like programmatic things. And so you'll see in this memo, there's some information, there's some background information about just the childcare shortage in general. And then looking at how Estacada currently regulates childcare facilities, and I'll go into that in a second. And then looking at some options for changes that we could make that we expect, just from our kind of preliminary review, we expect these types of changes at the bottom of the memo under alternatives. Those might be some good options for just expanding the opportunities for childcare facilities to be located somewhere, you know, opened and then reducing barriers to how they run or, you know, identifying maybe programmatic or incentive type, you know, support for them. So, but first, and you should all have this printed out in your packets in front of you. So if you go to well, and I just wanna stop there and see if Alan, did you wanna chime in at all and say anything?
I think that's a fantastic introduction. So we can just leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Yeah, so looking on the second page at how Estacada regulates childcare facilities. Without having to read through, I mean, this is a pretty succinct summary here, but in case you don't wanna read it, basically, our code is not only limiting, but it's also confusing. We don't have, we have a couple different definitions provided for, or actually, we just have one definition provided for daycare facility. And then throughout the other sections of the code, like in the different zones, different wording is used to refer to daycare or childcare facilities. So you'll see daycare facilities in the definition, definition section, and then in one of the zones, it allows family daycare. And then in another zone, it allows childcare facilities, right? So it's not consistent in the wording that it's using. And if this wasn't, you know, government code, if this was just sort of a colloquial memo document, maybe it wouldn't matter, but when it comes to development code, it really matters that the wording, the word, the phrase that is defined in your definition section needs to precisely match what's listed in the zone. So, so that's one easy fix is, all right, let's make sure that the wording is consistent. Next, there's the issue of there are different types of childcare facilities. So we can have an in-home daycare that just serves, you know, six, maybe ten kids, and it's in someone's house, right? And that is a state licensed daycare facility. But they're only allowed to have a certain number of kids there. And obviously, it's in someone's house. So those are the types of daycares that you would see allowed in residential zones in a city. There are other types of daycares that allow more children that are not usually, you know, run out of someone's home. Maybe sometimes they are in some cities, you'll see they'll allow as like a conditional use. They'll allow them to go, you know, the next level up to one of the daycares that allows up to, I don't know, I'm making these numbers up, like sixteen children, right? And the licensing procedure at the state is different for those different levels of, you know, the type of facility that you're running, based on the number of kids that you're serving, maybe the types of programming that they run. And I wish I knew more about that. I'm sure Brittany, who came to your last meeting, could probably talk a little bit about that, but that's something that through this process, we would wanna look much more closely at what the different state categories and definitions for daycare types are and where those thresholds are. And then just make sure that our code, you know, maybe we don't have to get too specific with matching it, but at least make sure that our code is not like accidentally prohibiting something because we didn't pay attention to how the state defines it or something like that. Okay, so, so there's the second problem is that there are these different types of daycare facilities that the state recognizes and our code doesn't really match up with, you know, recognizing those different types. And then third, there are a number of zones that we have in the city that don't allow daycare. Either they don't allow it at all or they only allow it as a conditional use, so it would have to go before the planning commission. And as far as I'm aware, there's not been much conversation, certainly not in the past three and a half years since I've been here. And I don't know, maybe you can tell me about before that, like, when, when is the last time that the city took a look at the zones where daycare is allowed and thought and talked to the community about, you know, whether we wanna change this? Do we want to allow daycare in more parts of the city? Does it make sense to allow daycare in the new riverfront commercial zone, for example, where there's other, you know, you could have you know, other types of commercial uses, you could have institutional uses over there, maybe it, maybe it wouldn't conflict with those other uses if there was a daycare in that zone too. So things like that, we're wanting to have this conversation and get your ideas about what parts of the city makes sense to have a day, to allow daycares, or at least where you don't see any conflict with there being a daycare there. I'm gonna pause there because I kinda just blurted out all my thoughts and maybe Alan will have more. I'm not really following the memo at this point.
So I have a couple of comments and questions. So I know after we discussed it, it went to the city council and it kinda got bounced around the room. And it seemed like there were some city councillors that were initially saying, took the aspect of what is the city doing and getting involved with childcare? We don't want, or we shouldn't be dealing with childcare, or, and I'm not phrasing that correctly, but I don't think it's the planning commission's idea or plan to get into childcare, i.e. subsidizing or creating a public-private partnership somehow. Our job is to do just what we're doing right now, is talk about the code and figure out the regulations and how can we better update that and create less barriers to entry so that we can potentially help the community with childcare issues. So again, we're not in any way planning on subsidizing or at least, I guess as a person and a, as the chairperson, I don't, it's not my intent to subsidize childcare or create a public childcare that's run by the city. And I don't think we need to vote on that or anything, but I don't think that's anybody's intent. Second of all, when we start, or when you started talking, something came to mind. I think it was kind of in reference to child foster care. Do we need to dive into maybe adult foster care or anything like that? I mean, I, I don't know that that's come up, but since it's kind of fits in that same box, like as time goes on, maybe there'll be a need for that in the city. We have somebody that has some experience with teen challenge. I know that doesn't fall into that box necessarily, but you know, it similar, similar in a lot of ways. So just a thought. I had one more and did, like, I got talking and lost it. So it'll come back to me, I promise though. So anybody else with any thoughts or questions?
I agree with that position is what our job is, is to not get into, make the things better for one group of people over everybody else. It has to be equal for everyone.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's exactly right. We, at that council meeting, it seemed like there was a miscommunication or misunderstanding about what exactly the proposal was. When we say the planning commission was recommending that the city look at options for removing barriers and, you know, better facilitating childcare facilities. It was not at all a proposal for the city to start providing childcare or to purchase a childcare facility for, you know, anything like that. And so we could have made that clear. And I think a couple of the councils, we didn't get to, they didn't get to go into much discussion, but it seemed like a couple of the councillors helped clarify exactly what you just said.
We have, yeah, we got to a consensus on that, from that standpoint.
Which is, yeah, just looking at regulations.
Right. And I think something that we talked about too is looking at all regulations as well, you know, what, what can we do from a whole standpoint, not just childcare? So, but this would be a great starting point to get us there. So yeah, if we wanna toss in adult care as well too, I see that as a growing need.
Yeah, we just hit the tip of the iceberg on, on just with, I, the childcare, because it, it expands not just to care for older people, middle-aged people and real old people like me.
I believe it brought up a real bright spot. When I came into Estacada, I seen the three schools. And I was like, I didn't see any children, but one day I came out and like, it was this thing going on over in the park by the school and it was a million kids outside. I'm like, oh my God, this is great. This town is live. This, this place is alive. Estacada is booming. And I don't see any, I, I mean, from, from standpoint, from coming from another city, I don't see any, like, um, other schools have after-school things, but like teen centers or places where they can go and they all can play or after-school, like, place for that. But I, I, I really thought of brought up a real bright spot that after, um, the meeting, people were thinking like, and in my, at least I was thinking like, well, this might cause something to spur, it might bring something forward. Daycare, even the young lady that presented her case, not so much as her solely, but for the whole Estacada to come together and maybe it may be something might pop up. But my thing is this, is that it was a real bright spot. I mean, this, I got driving around, I don't see any spots where children congregate or teenage, young teenagers can congregate and have a good time after, good times, excuse me, after school or whatever, at a teen center or whatever. But I'm sure that that can be done through the zoning or whatever it is that, you know, we do.
Yeah.
I just, I just believe, I mean, I don't wanna ramble, but I just, for me, I love kids. And to see them grow in the neighborhoods they grew up in is awesome. Estacada is like that. I'm not from a small town, Buffalo, New York is really big. To me, as in compared to New York City is small. However, there's a lot of, a lot of teen centers and daycares, like you go past, you see daycares, people, homes with signs and, you know, they're, they're doing the daycare thing like this, plotted out here. But here, it's not like that. I mean, I'm not saying the city is big, but it has a lot of people that do care. There's a lot of people that's still working in the city. When I came, I was like, these people are doing great. This town is not broke. People care. People are in a position to help other people achieve this goal. And I, I think it's a good thing. I really do.
Yeah, that brings up, I think, a question that we should probably include in this, you know, exploration is yeah, what, what types of facilities that are not necessarily daycares, not necessarily school facilities, but that are, I don't know what you would call it, sort of like youth supportive and recreational facilities, you know, a community center, for example, or, yeah, other, those other types of places where kids or youth, you know, high school age, kids can go to hang out or would go for their recreational activities or, or whatnot. And yeah, does our current zoning allow for those facilities in the places that really makes sense for, to the community to allow them?
Yep. My kids, one of them plays basketball, actually. Ryan Carpenter's coach. And we've been playing tournaments at a place in Beaverton called Hoop Source. And as I, as I look at this matrix of zoning and what's allowed and what's not, as it pertains to daycares, it kinda, that was my other thought that I missed was this hoop source is a warehouse. It's in an industrial park. It has plenty of parking. The place is dead on the weekends because the businesses aren't open, but every weekend, they host a tournament. In my kid's age group, there was fourteen teams, one week, the most recent weekend, and he's just sixth grade. And there's fifth grade and there's fourth grade and there's eighth grade and there's thousands of kids, it seems like. And it's taken a, a, a otherwise, you know, booming place during the week, but on the weekends, it's now bringing this influx of people into there and, and all the little cafes and Starbucks is on the corners and Carl's Jr. down the street are just crazy busy because you have all this. And I know that our zoning doesn't allow very much flexibility with, as it pertains to the industrial. And it's for, you know, otherwise obvious reasons. You don't want kids running around while there's forklifts zoom and pass, but at the same time, if it's done in the right way and it, and it's allowable, it could contribute well to YMCA or a private entity to come in and put seventeen basketball courts in and start hosting tournaments in Est- in little old Estacada and because I mean, it's, it's people coming from Seattle and Idaho and California and Estacada and Scappus. And I mean, it's, it's crazy.
Probably staying in hotels.
Yes, it's, it's absolutely bonkers. And these kids, parents, it's volleyball, it's everything. And it's just the way you sports are anymore. Everybody's diehard for this stuff. And weekends, you live and die by tournaments. And so, I mean, it's, it's something that it would be neat if we could incorporate that too. I mean, we're, we're eating the elephant many bites at a time right now because we're talking about childcare, but it's spinning off and these other things, but it, I guess it speaks to that. We also need to just look at our zoning code as a whole. Because it's, we've added pieces as we've grown, but it's, we haven't taken a big look at it. So again, I'm talking too much, guys.
No.
That's good. The agenda item is discussion. So someone's gotta talk.
Scouting for H or any of the other stuff that.
Yeah. So I guess where do we go and what, what, how do we wanna shape this conversation?
Yeah, I, okay, so the other agenda item, and we're not moving on to it yet, but you will, next month, you'll have a joint workshop with the city council that is really an open-ended, broad look at kind of visioning and growth management concerns and discussion for Estacada. It's super open-ended. We're trying to make it a little less open-ended by asking you later in this meeting, you know, if there are specific topics. But this is one of the topics that could get discussed further at that meeting if you want to. If not, or maybe in addition to that, I think the next steps here are start identifying what changes make sense to the zoning code in terms of where is daycare allowed? Where do we think it makes sense to allow it? And we could start really simple. Just putting the types of daycares into two conceptual buckets in our mind, right? Small, in-home type daycare versus larger childcare facility. Just start there and, and sit down together and look at the zoning map. We could start doing this a little bit tonight if you want to. Look at the zoning map and say, it, yes, it makes sense to me to just allow any size of daycare outright in the downtown zone or the general commercial zone. But I don't think daycares should be allowed in the industrial zone, obviously. Some of the zones, like the the highway commercial zone, for example, that zone in my mind is, I could, I could see it might make sense to allow it as a conditional use. Maybe a daycare would work there depending on what the neighboring uses were, but I could also see daycares conflicting with some of the other uses that are allowed in that zone. So that conversation, you know, we'll need to get be thoughtful about where, where you're trying to put kids, right? You don't wanna expose them to, you probably don't want a daycare next to somewhere that you could put a dispensary, for example. I think the state prohibits that anyway, but things like that, right? And so that conversation, I'm not sure if we wanna get too deep into that tonight, or if you want to schedule like a workshop to sit down and talk through that.
May, maybe it makes sense to just go through right now and, and look at the matrix here with the daycare. I mean, as far as daycare as it's defined by our code, we don't make a delineation of in-home versus bona fide, like more commercial type, do we?
There's not really a delineation. It just, it, the thing that's confusing is that it makes this reference to the to the ORS, to a chapter that doesn't really deal with daycare as we understand it. It's, it's more like institutional care for children, like even like juvenile corrections and stuff. So it doesn't do that and it only limits facilities to twelve max, like twelve kids max. So there's, yeah, there's, there's not really a delineation between small and, and larger facilities.
Maybe that needs to happen first.
What, what needs to hap- oh, delineating.
Delineate between the two and then run down your list like all of a sudden.
Yeah. So we, yes, we definitely want to update the code to clarify that delineation. And then what, but yeah, what we could do, we could go down. I could give a brief description of what types of uses are allowed in the zone that's shown there. And we could just talk about whether it makes sense, maybe there's, we're not sure, maybe there's disagreement, maybe everyone unanimously agrees that daycare should be allowed there, even though it's not, and we could kinda highlight those real quick.
I, I have a question just from the, when Brittany was presenting. What are some examples, refresh our memory or that we could point to that, that are barriers currently?
What are the obstacles?
Yeah, what, yeah, within Estacada's code, what are the obstacles?
I think just available space and buildings that are available and I think the called the old true value building, but it's been, maybe it's been something since, next to the Reliance connects on Main Street there. You know, it's a big open building, but you have to have a certain amount of exterior playground space. And it's gotta be fenced and all these other things. And so while the building itself is great, the lot doesn't lend itself to that. So then that one gets crossed off the list. And then there's like the Forest Service building, as she, I know as you brought up. And it sounded like the owner went by it on her possibly, but there was some certain barriers to that as far as look, maybe location. Cause it's part of the, the green zone.
Oh, the, the riverfront commercial zone does not allow daycare. Right.
So it's, it's a big building and she would need partners to be, to lease that. But at the same time, and then convert parking lot to playground or, or whatever the conversation was.
And get a, either a zone change or a code change to allow daycare in the first place, right?
Or conditional use of a particular building.
Yeah, well.
Boots and spurs across the street, which have been empty for a while. They've got plenty of bathrooms that you've got upstairs, you've got downstairs, there's outside in the parking lot that you can put on all kinds of event for kids to stay active.
Is it for sale?
I don't know. So I think that was part of the discussion of like, each one of them had its unique problems, but not everyone had the same problem. And I, it kind of pairs with our multifamily housing problem of, we have these areas delineated on the zoning map. But when you look at real life property, there's either a house on there where you have to buy the house and the property, and then you're working on a small piece of property or it's the cost of development is not feasible right now, or it, it, it's just kinda each one of them has their own little idiosyncrasies, I guess.
Yeah. And to add to the first, the first example that you gave about maybe there's a, a property in the downtown zone that doesn't have enough outdoor space for what the state will require for a childcare facility to have in the downtown zone, in most parts of the downtown zone, we actually have it's not a minimum setback, it's a maximum setback. So in order to create the downtown feel, the code doesn't want you to set your building back farther than, is it ten feet maybe? And those apply to the sides also, and I can't remember if they apply to the rear, maybe they don't. But, but that means that the building has to get built, you know, has to take up a certain amount of the lot. But um, but that means that the building has to get built, you know, has to take up a certain amount of the lot. So that'll preclude certain um childcare facilities. I think there's a building for sale right now that 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 person was looking at and they couldn't do it because there's not enough outdoor space. Stuff like that, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't think of a um maximum required setback as being a barrier to childcare facility until you hear from childcare providers that, oh, we have to have this much outdoor space and you know, all these downtown buildings don't have that because they were built to the code.
So that'd be another thing to factor in is is uh how how can we be more flexible with that if a childcare facility were
Yeah, yeah.
To the city.
Right, like would, you know, it would be worth exploring, would would we want to allow an exemption from certain code requirements for childcare facilities specifically?
I've been listening and thinking about everything you've all said. My mind just went I said, you know what, we've just about maxed them right out of the city, no matter what we do without an exemption. And it might be easier just to take a piece of property just barely outside the city, the private land that has a huge barn, lots of bath and a big bunch of horses to go play with. You know, it's it sounds like we've got, we've got an influx of kids gonna need childcare and I read in this that we have to stay with under thirteen. Now, is that for one household or for one daycare itself of any size?
Right now, that's just one facility. It can't have more than twelve kids.
Gee, Tom, that's just about taking up your whole house.
City or state guideline?
That's the city's current definition of a daycare facility.
Is there a minimum square footage in the house to have twelve kids?
Not in our code, but in the state, I think the state's requirements.
Do it in one room.
Right, right. Yeah, you have to have a certain amount of square footage per kid.
And a certain number of caregivers to, yeah, that's, I think that's all state.
Right, right. A- as far as the school properties, this kind of goes out the window though. I don't want to say obviously, because it's not obvious, but um classrooms have one teacher and twenty-five kids. And then there's some preschools or some daycares on the school property that obviously don't abide by this, so I'm assuming that they don't have to fall into that bucket.
Yeah, the city, the city is not the the regulating agency, so I'll just, we'll just not share that information with the state.
So there's no square footage for each child in a facility to run and play or just go like this.
I think there is. State, from the state, at the state level, there is.
Well, COVID, COVID is there and there.
Thirty-five square feet was COVID. Not thirty-six, which was six by six, it was thirty-five, which was really weird. So.
Short hours.
So, I don't know, I guess we could go, we could go down a hundred different rabbit trails, but I guess we should find a direction, right?
Yeah, um well, if if everyone's okay with it, maybe we could take I don't know if we'll go end up going down a rabbit hole, but maybe we could try to do this sort of quickly, not getting into too much discussion, but kind of just do a pulse check, go down this list, um, I'll give super brief description of the zone and what it allows. Um, and hear from you guys whether you think it makes sense to allow small and or large childcare facilities in that zone.
Does this have to be done through the city council?
The code, yeah, so the um
Recommendation to go to the council.
Initiating the code, a code amendment or initiating a comprehensive plan amendment, those are both legislative decisions. Um, those can be initiated by either the planning commission or the city council. Um, and so you all had the first discussion on this back at your last meeting. Um, so you're technically the you are the decision-making body that's initiating this amendment, but the ultimate decision on any code changes or plan changes would be made by the city council after your recommendation.
Say, we recommend, we never just make.
One other thing that's worth talking about, since we have uh, at least one new member here, we have two different maps in front of us. Uh, zoning and comprehensive plan. The zoning is the current status as a snapshot of today, right?
Yep, the zoning map shows um, everything that's within city limits is shown in color. And then all of the areas that are shown inside of that red dotted line. Um, that's all within the urban growth boundary, so all of that land is eligible and kind of expected to come into city limits eventually, but all of the properties that are still white within that red dotted line are not yet annexed into city limits, so it gets complicated, but you'll you'll look at this map probably more than you would like to over over the next couple of years, um, and you'll kind of get used to it. But yeah, so the zoning map is where if you want to see what the current city limits are, it's everything that's shaded in color on the zoning map. And then your comprehensive plan map um, shows the color shading for all of the properties that are within the urban growth boundary. So that shows you um, when a property does eventually come into city limits, what is the zoning that's going to apply to that property? So that's the comprehensive plan map. Yeah. And if you have questions um about anything and everything related to zoning and comprehensive planning and the statewide land use planning laws, you're always, all of you are always welcome to contact us in the planning division. Our brains are full of too much of that information. We like to get it out. Okay, so let's maybe go down this list and you've got the zoning map in front of you, so you can try to follow along. Um, we could Paul, would you like a copy of the planned and zoning maps? We've got them already printed out. In the office, yeah.
There's a couple of them on the on the right side of the of the table, or at least the right, right from the way I'm looking at it. Are there two maps there that are free?
Um, he, Brian's gonna show up a little bit late, so. And just to um, while we're waiting, just to brag a little bit about Alan and our new GIS program. Um, we are in the process of bringing GIS, the mapping system, geographic information system. Um, for all time, we've always had the county do all of our mapping services for us, which is great, but um, also creates challenges, you know, we have to do a lot of coordination and back and forth if we want to get anything updated. And so we're bringing all of that in-house, and so we'll have lots of mapping capabilities in maybe a year. Um, but this is, these updated maps are uh, one of the first of our you know, to come out of our new GIS system. Thank you to Alan for that.
Thanks.
Um, okay, so going down the list, uh, in table one, the first zone is R is the R one zone, that's the lowest density residential zone. It does allow daycare facilities, and so that means it allows a facility up to thirteen kids. We'll consider that, or sorry, up to twelve kids, we'll consider that the smaller daycare facility. And so those facilities would be um, in-home daycare facilities. And then as a conditional use, it looks like, what does this asterisk mean? Oh, so the conditional use daycare facility that's allowed in our one zone is that um, you know, child welfare type facility.
Right, so kind of my understanding is the reason they delineated between the two, just regular old daycare and then the as defined in ORS chapter four eighteen is that those were more for institutional facilities or, you know, for um, like institutional foster care and maybe even juvenile corrections. I'm not really sure. There's a lot of um, different uses that fall under that ORS chapter, so um, I think that's the distinction, but the R code doesn't really do much to kind of tease them apart other than just making this reference to that chapter, so. That's, yeah, that's what it looks like for these residential zones.
Taylor, would they be also uh, required to stay at the twelve child limit?
Well, that's up to you all and the city council. Oh, you mean the um
Under the conditional use.
The child welfare.
Yeah, child welfare.
Maybe Alan knows. I'm not sure.
Just according to the definition, it 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 it's it's a kind of unclear, but it says daycare facility, meaning a facility accommodating fewer than thirteen children, blah, 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 or meeting the definition and standards as contained in ORS four eighteen. So I think that maybe those that use is not constrained by the under thirteen limit. So again, it could, it's, it it depends, yeah, it could have more, um, but yeah, I think like to go with Taylor said. I think it just depends on the interpretation of of planning commission and council.
Is that appropriate for a residential area?
And that's the question.
Oh, yeah. A whole bunch of NIMBYs not in my backyard. You just made the full circle.
There you go.
Yeah, so does the existing, so basically the existing allowance in that zone is smaller in-home regular daycare facilities, um, or you could get a conditional use permit from the planning commission to allow that more institutional type facility that might be larger than thirteen children, but we would find that out at the planning commission hearing for the conditional use. Hello?
We might as well make an introduction since you're walking in here. This is uh, Ryan Carpenter, our second newest member to the uh, planning commission. You want to give a Reader's Digest version of uh why you're here and uh introduce yourself?
Welcome to everybody. I think I know most people around the room, but it's a pleasure to be here. I apologize to be late. On top of work, I'm also a sixth grade basketball coach, so just uh, finished practice and hustling down, but I'm excited to be a part of this team. Uh, very much looking for the opportunity to participate in the future and the future growth of Estacada. And I also want to introduce, this is Dane Carpenter, and he's my seventh grade son. And uh, so he wanted, he volunteered uh, to come and watch and be a part of this process, so I'm happy to have him, uh, easy on the the bag wrapper there, uh, and uh, we'll we'll stay quiet.
We won't, we won't put a microphone up to him.
So just to get you up to speed, we're going through uh daycare facilities in the city of Estacada. And right now we're diving through the allowable areas that they are, um we can have them currently.
Yep, and so we're in the, there's childcare memo in the packet that should be printed out at your table. And we're on page two of that memo, and um, so we're looking at the zones. Oh, yeah, you got a bunch of the, our our new people got um, the planning commissioner handbook, so you got a bunch of stuff on your tables there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then.
Oh, Paul's got a question. I I'm going back to uh, uh, Commissioner Hawks' question here about uh, the size, the twelve, twelve people in an R, R one or any of the R zones. Um, is there normal and customary? I mean, is is there something we can look at that other cities do and it the that we can uh, kind of see what's worked and what's not worked? Any any idea there? Or could that be found?
Definitely be found, yeah.
Is there any requirement or some kind of fencing around? People can't get in and can't get out to these facilities?
Currently, no, but um, that is something that you could adopt into your development code.
Thinking outside the house now.
And that's something that, you know, we don't, we haven't had enough of a chance to um, take a deep dive into the state requirements, so that might be another thing that the state addresses, just like they address how much square footage do you need per child. They might address things like fencing or whatever they would call it, but.
My great-grandkids could not run grandpa and grandma.
So yeah, I've got um yeah, look into what's normal in other jurisdictions in terms of in their in their residential, and I I guess maybe that question is basically in their zones that are um strictly residential, like our R one zone, especially in their low-density residential zones. Um, what's normal? How do they limit the size of the daycare facilities that they do allow in those zones? So we can look into that and kind of get a cross-section of what various other places do.
Just not by our city.
Were there any other thoughts on? Yeah, do do, does anyone feel like we should allow um or might want to allow larger daycare facilities? Maybe it's not one of the institutional child welfare facilities, but um as a conditional use in the low-density residential zone, you could also allow those larger daycare facilities that are above thirteen children? Is that something you want to look into? Does it feel like a, does that just feel like an immediate no?
I think I might stay away from that, just just by virtue of neighborhoods and you know, people. They tend to get a little excited. Yeah, I would, I would all belong with that. I mean, if you're going for lots and lots of kids, you're gonna need a school building or of size to handle it. The young lady, she said they bumped up to like eighty-four? Like that? That's tremendous.
It's a lot of kids.
A lot of space.
The only the the immediate thought goes through my head is no, but all of the school grounds are overweight in the R one. And I I mean, obviously, we have kids there all day long during the week. And there's a fair amount of little parcels that are R one that aren't necessarily residential areas. We we could, I could go through and point a few out. The piece of ground across from Granny's, for instance, is two acre piece that's you know, not any immediate neighbors there, but it is zone R one and could lend itself due to its proximity to, say, the library and the school or the school buildings, yeah. Bus lines and that that sort of stuff, that it could be a prime spot for something like this. And I know we could always get in the ifs and whats and all that stuff, but I don't want to say a hard no until we're there.
Yeah, yeah, um, that's a great point. The the school is on all the, all of the schools are on or in the low-density residential zone, and they are allowed there as conditional uses. And as with any conditional use, you can either write it into your code or during the public hearing, you can decide to apply conditions like um, they have to, they have to put fencing, they have to set back the buildings farther than a normal house or something would have to set you know, setback in that zone.
When you say setback, setback farther from the road?
Farther from the road, farther from the property line, you know, with a conditional use approval, you have more discretion to apply those extra requirements.
Case by case.
Right, and so if you're thinking about um yeah, just like you were just now thinking, well, you know, you're maybe putting a daycare in a neighborhood in a residential area, you've got people living there, you can you can, you were starting to imagine all these potential impacts and conflicts, and so that's where um through the conditional use process, you can decide to apply requirements and restrictions that would um, prevent those conflicts or those impacts.
Just looking at uh, looking up some some Oregon guidelines here, this this may give some good perspective, but i- if I'm looking at this right, there are three kinds of childcare uh, facilities recognized in Oregon. If I'm looking at this right, there are three kinds of childcare uh facilities recognized in Oregon. Registered family childcare, certified family childcare, and then certified childcare center. Registered family childcare is maximum of ten, should be in a provider's own home, certified maximum twelve. Which lines up with our numbers and in a uh single family home. And then certified childcare is in a commercial facility. So if we did. Allow something like that in, in one of our residential areas. It would be, have to be a commercial facility, it couldn't just be somebody turning a home if I'm reading this right. Into a, into something that would allow more than twelve.
What was the third one called?
Certified Child Care Center. I think you read that right, Paul, and and I guess is if this is our current standard, if. Um, if in town, if I read C one and C two as commercial and RC is residential commercial, is that correct?
C two is residential commercial and RC is riverfront commercial.
Oh, okay. Either way, it looks like if a, if a, if a number three were to come in like a kinder care. Or some type of an organization that currently the city would prohibit their ability to access commercial storefronts. Uh, and in order to offer that business, which is something that should be considered. Um, especially as the demand grows. Also, I was going to point out in the residential one and two, like. Uh, Mr. Wheeler talked about, you know, if we think about it, there are daycares happening all over in R ones currently both. In compliance and out of compliance, and what I look at, and that includes a lot of our churches who are inside residential. Facilities who offer everyday daycare to the people who are a part of those congregations and in addition to. I also think about the Red Barn preschool and there's another preschool that's on. Whatever it is uh next to uh Clackamas River Elementary School that also houses far more than thirteen kids. And the difference between a daycare and a preschool isn't actually that significant. When you think about the co-op perspective of how preschools work in those organizations and the curriculum that goes along with it, so. I'd say we're already out of compliance with that. By a lot.
Yep, agreed. Yeah. So um. Yeah, I don't know if we want to move on. Through the other residential zones, there are some differences. Um, obviously, as you go up in the R numbers, it gets denser, so R two is medium residential. R three is, sorry, medium density residential, R three is the multifamily zone. Um, and in all three of their zones, the same. Types of daycare, you know, the same type of maximum twelve kid daycare is allowed outright. And then as a conditional use, you could have that institutional child welfare type of daycare. But if you think about a multifamily area, if you've got a, an apartment, if you've got apartment buildings in an area. Um, I don't know, maybe this is just me, but I imagine a larger daycare facility making more sense in that type of place.
As, as we get into North City Residential, that's, that's the NCR, right? And that's pretty much the most recent annexations and subdivision, subdivision applications up Eagle Creek. Highway and Deuce Road, right?
Yep.
And that's kind of a mix of everything. Cause it has, we do have multifamily slated for the further, furthest northern portion of Eagle Creek Highway before it. Exits the city limits. But here we don't even allow it as a conditional or an allowed use.
Right. And that zone, so the NCR zone is one of the six new zones, some of you remember this. Um, the six new zones that were created in twenty twenty and um. We've already noticed some kind of, I don't want to call them typos, but you know, omissions. Or, you know, it seems like, and this is inevitable, I'm not blaming anybody, but um, you know, some things just weren't. Considered in the creation of those zones. We can't think of everything, um, but. Uh, it might be worth adding in some allowed uses that probably would have made sense to allow in. Just nobody thought of them at the time. Um, and so, yeah, North City Residential. Um, is probably one of those zones. Why, why do we allow, actually in the NCR zone? Well, I guess this is one of the places where it gets confusing. Daycare. Facility is not allowed outright in that zone, but family daycare provider, this is one of the examples. Family daycare provider is allowed in that zone, but then we don't have a definition of what family daycare provider is. So. And if we just assume that family daycare provider falls under the same um definition that we have in our code. In the definition section, then we have to limit it to twelve kids. Um, so the question here is really. Do you want to allow both the twelve child type of um facility and. The larger um, what was it? The childcare center type of facility that. Is more of a commercial type of use, and if that answer is yes, then you know, you want to look at in that zone. Um, multifamily, multifamily is only allowed within two hundred feet of Eagle Creek. Road because they wanted to put it close to the bus line, and so is that something that you would also maybe just allow that larger facility within that same two hundred feet? Maybe it could be a ground floor um, ground floor daycare in. The apartment building that they build there, something like that.
A lot goes into this. Because it is, especially as we discuss the annexations and and the actual subdivisions. They have lots delineated generally, and then we had the blocks of the multifamily. So trying to fit something that had potentially a bigger footprint as, as one of these childcare centers would. You know, that had to be either a, a rezone and you're taking away from that multifamily more than likely, or you're trying to stuff it in with. Residential essentially, right?
If I just heard Ben right, you're saying if you've got all these communities of. Multi residences and stuff, and you're wanting to make a commercial building or a child center. Which one of them has to have a conditional use permit? Cause it won't be an outright use.
It could, in the zone immediately next to that one, uh, which is the central mixed use zone, CMU. In that zone, it's a mixed use zone, right? So you can have both. Commercial and residential uses intermingled in that zone. In that zone, it explicitly allows outright, you can have ground floor commercial uses and upper floor residential uses. And so um, the North City Residential Zone could be amended to allow similar, a similar mix of uses. Um, but maybe you would want to, I mean, it's up to the, it's all up to you all in the council. Um, but maybe it would make more sense to um only allow certain types of commercial uses.
Only suggesting a place that they might be doing that.
Right.
We're not going to build it, we're not going to buy it.
Right.
We're not going to run it.
It's just allowing it. If someone, if some private entity can make it happen, the city would allow it to happen, basically, wouldn't stop it from happening.
That's about as far as we might be.
Reducing the barriers.
Yep.
Okay.
Almost all of this can be subject to conditional use too. They can apply.
If it's listed, yeah, if it is listed as a conditional use, then they can always ask.
Right.
Um, but it has to get listed as a conditional use first. Otherwise, if it's not listed as an outright use and it's not listed as a conditional use, it is assumed, the way that our code works is, it is assumed to be prohibited. Yeah, so I want to do a time check and pulse check here. Um, we're about, we're an hour in to the meeting and we could continue going down through. The zones here, or we could think about um. What this, how you want this process to move forward? Do you want, would it be? Helpful to, to do this in more of like a workshop, work session? Type setting where we like get out our zoning maps and may, or maybe print out like big posters and we can. Tag sticky notes on there or draw where we think things should or shouldn't be allowed. Um, do you want to make sure that this topic comes up in your joint workshop with the city council next month? Kind of get their direction where they want to go.
Wow, is that an open meeting for the people that want to build it, make it happen?
That's a workshop, so it won't, it won't involve any public involvement. It'll be a discussion between, just. Between you all and the city council, and we will be there, you know. Helping answer questions as we can, but it'll, it's really going to be a pretty open discussion.
I think it definitely should be discussed.
Yeah, and the issues would be the childcare facilities. And in that with zone changes.
In the joint workshop?
Yeah.
We're going to talk about that next. We have a, we have a long list of issues that you could focus on. You want to get your insight on that?
Would it be possible? I mean, for me, this is, this is overwhelming um to think about and I admire. You know, you guys for digging into this stuff uh day in, day out. Would, it seems like I, I know I could use an education on, on childcare. You know, just kind of seeing that there are already different, three different types of classifications in Oregon. Just to get up to speed on that, would there be a resource that could come and talk to us, someone from Clackamas County? Um, maybe they could talk about what different cities are doing within the area as well too. I mean, I don't, I don't know. This is, this is just my thoughts here, but um.
There is a county program called Preschool Promise. And um, I've been looking at how to get in touch with them as, as a, as city staff, just to see what it would take to establish. Something like that in Estacada. Um, as part of that outreach, I could ask them if they would be willing to come and speak to planning commission and. And or city council about that.
That's a good idea. Ryan, do you have any assets that would be helpful from the school district or the county ESD or any of that? Side of things?
Potentially the ESD, but uh the, the daycare game is kind of out of our wheelhouse. Um, from that perspective, I would be curious to hear. Uh, particularly from cities who have experienced this problem already and how they managed that. Think of young. Young uh cities who are emerging that require that, like a Sherwood or. Um, a Happy Valley or, not that we want to be those people necessarily, but I know that they have an influx of. That demographic of family moving in that has.
Hillsborough, sure, yeah.
Whatever we do, if this is successful, Commissioner Wheeler could be the one visiting other cities.
Thank you, thank you for that appointment. It's an honor, a privilege.
I, I think you're uh Commissioner Strobel, I think your idea is a good one, that there are people who have gone through this path before. That makes sense not to have to reinvent any wheels for sure.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm hearing is we'll look into, can we get, maybe it's a presentation, maybe it's. Just a package of information, not that you want more things to read, but um. It'd be great to, yeah, to hear from someone who, you know, whether it's a county person or a, you know, program. Manager, coordinator, who's got an understanding of how. Cities, you know, other regions or cities are dealing with these issues.
How they go ahead and navigate it, cause it looks like there could be some real stumbling blocks. You know, I mean, the language has to be figured out. We don't, you don't have the language in your code that will match everything else. So that's a problem. If you get in the, in the argument with the state, you're going to lose.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we will look into that and for some of the um. Just thinking about how to keep it, keep this moving forward if possible, for some of the changes that seem. Uh, a little more like common sense and obvious, um, we could go ahead and. Draft up some, some of those proposed changes. Um, and even changes that we're not quite sure about, maybe it would be easier for you all to respond to something. In, in front of you rather than us saying, what do you want to change, right? Um, so we could go ahead and draft up some potential changes for you to look at and respond to. Talk to the council about, um, and at the meantime have. Whatever informational resource and contacts where we can get ahold of. Um, get them scheduled sometime within the next couple of months, possible.
It sounds good, and I think at the end of the day, I think the biggest thing is, is as a commission, we're, our job is just to. Hopefully clean up the code, recognize the issue we have, and then try to create a clear path for whoever that private or. Pseudo-government agency that's not us, um, will. Be able to accomplish the goal of creating more childcare oppor- opportunities in the um area, so. Uh, we can get into the weeds and all the regulations, and I think the more clear and concise and, and maybe less is more of. You can do it here, conditional use this, we're not going to get into fences and setbacks and all that stuff, we'll leave that to the state because they've already. Probably got it lined out, but I think just create that clear path so that people can have that opportunity to at least explore it. I think that's where my, my energy would like to see us focus on. Okay, so with that, we'll put that to. Put it, put it to bed for now and then uh go into the next one of joint workshop topics. Unless anybody, I don't, I don't want to cut anybody off if anybody's got any last remarks on this, but. Okay, let's go ahead and jump into the next one then, the joint workshop topics, and that'll be with the city council in the month of February.
Yes, so that is going to be held on, and I expect this won't work for everyone's schedule and I apologize, but they meet on Mondays, and so that's. It's going to be um, held on Monday, February twenty seventh. So I hope that most of you will be able to make that, will ask you for an RSVP sometime closer to the date. Um, so in your packet, you should have a printed out another memo called. I didn't know what to call it. It's called the State of the Estacada Municipal Code, and um. This is basically just a list that we have been building over time. And when I say we, this is across lots of different city staff. Not, not just planning staff, but um code enforcement, the city manager's office, the city recorder's office. All of us have to deal with, you know, applying different parts of the municipal code. And so as we do that, we run into part, places in the code where there's some issue, there's maybe a gap where there should be a requirement that. Isn't there and it messes up some process because we're not able to require something of an applicant that we really should be able to require. Um, or there are places in the code where the code conflicts with itself. There are, I think, multiple zones where there's a use that's pro, that's listed as prohibited. And it's also listed as a conditional use, right? So things like that, that we should really clean up. Um, and the kind of bigger things um. Like um, for example, I'm just looking down this list, number four, requiring. Park space in subdivisions. Our code currently does not actually require any provision of. Open park space if you're doing a residential subdivision. When you have a small subdivision, maybe it's not that big of a deal, but we've got these huge, like. Two hundred and twenty-four lot subdivisions coming in and they are not required by our code to put in park space. Um, it seems like an oversight, right? And I think when we've had these conversations, everyone tends to agree, there should be something there, right? We should either, maybe it's requiring a certain amount of space per acre developed. Or if you're not going to require or provide park space, you pay into the park fund, something like that. Um, just get something in our code, right? That's making sure that the city has the ability to provide park space for all of these residents that are coming in. Um, so this list is not by any means. You know, we're not, we're not saying that you have to discuss these things at your joint workshop next month. Um, but these are issues that staff are aware of, that are problems that we need to address. But these are issues that staff are aware of, that are problems that we need to address in our code sometime. Ideally over the next few years. That, and maybe some of them will jump out to you as, you know, kinda higher priority in your mind. Or maybe some of them you have questions about and wanna talk through right now. Or maybe there's something that you don't see on this list that is a concern that you're having about the way the city is growing or yeah, just how the city's growing. What issues are you anticipating in the future that you think we need to address now? Things like that. I apologize, we're asking really open-ended questions today. I know that's not super easy.
No, Paul's right. This is a lot of stuff to digest and to, it's gonna have to take more than one time, I'm sure.
Yeah, and we are, we are including this list in the city councils, we're actually including it for their information in their goal-setting packet. They're gonna do their goal-setting workshop this weekend on Sunday. So they will also have this list in front of them, and so they'll be aware of all of these issues that we are recommending. They consider. Maybe what would be helpful is we just start going down the list and hearing any thoughts that you all have about, or questions that you have about each item.
I have one, and it just, cause planning and growth kinda is our main wheelhouse. The consistent comment or complaint is traffic's getting bad. Why are you guys letting the city blow up into Happy Valley or Sandy or insert your favorite city you hate in this comment? From a planning commission standpoint, I, I think there's a understanding, or there's a misunderstanding that we're just pushing this growth. And I think, and I don't know how to explain this to the greater city, but our job is to look at these applications and these land use issues through a specific lens as defined by the state and the city code. And so there's a limited amount of stuff we can do. But to kinda get into the, the growth and the traffic impact part of it, like how do we get ahold of ODOT? And say, you need to come and sit here and listen to this and help us deal with the traffic. Because we can deal with the dotted line at the top of this map, but everything beyond that is Plaquemines County and then the state of Oregon. And so how do we, I, I guess as proactive as possible, get them involved, so it doesn't end up being like a Dundee and Newburgh situation where people just hate going over that side of town, and then whatever it is thirty-five years later, they finally do a bypass. Or improve the highway to a point where it can actually control the traffic, so. And that's a, that's a big issue. And I don't know how to do it because they obviously don't care that much, cause they don't come here. But how do we kinda get over that hump and get them there?
That's a million dollar question. I would love to know the answer to that question too. We're working with ODOT, with some folks at ODOT currently on updating our transportation system plan, which we're in the middle of that project. For transportation facilities that are within our urban growth boundary. We get to set basically the, the threshold at which we no longer, you know, tolerate the traffic, right? So I'm forgetting what it's called, maybe it's level of service. Basically, we get to decide how much congestion are we willing to tolerate? And we get to set that level, allowable level of congestion in our code calculation for level of service. And so when we require these traffic impact studies for subdivisions or other types of development, the traffic impact study will show, will use that methodology that we've agreed is the tolerable amount of congestion. And they have to, they have to scope their traffic impact study according to that calculation. And so that is, I say that and maybe some of you are thinking, oh, well, let's just, you know, lower the amount of congestion that we're willing to tolerate, but there's all sorts of. I don't know, maybe that's the way that, maybe that's the way that you wanna go, and I'm sure that there's a limit to that too, right? The state firmly protects the right for residential land to get developed. And so I don't know what the limit is there, but, but there is an opportunity for the city to to be more strict and intolerant of congestion created by these developments.
But that only is within our city limits, right?
Right, so all of the, I think what you were talking about mostly is all of the traffic happening on the highway, which obviously as Estacada grows, the highway is the primary way in and out of the city. And we don't have any control really over that transportation facility. I don't have a good answer.
Not a good answer.
Is River Mill Road, is that the city limits?
Yes.
That is the boundary, isn't it?
No, 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 Deuce and then. Is it Uli Road? No, it's before Uli. I guess there is no road there.
Parts of River Mill Road are in city limits and parts are not in city limits. But it is.
Particularly that right turn onto the old Eagle Creek Highway from River Mill, does that belong inside the city?
It, that intersection.
It recently was talked about, and so they're gonna put a stoplight, a traffic signal there.
Great, okay, I'd say that's.
And I think the developers front the money for that. But, but the next problem's gonna be River Mill and the highway.
Right.
And that's ODOT.
Yeah, and so that's one, so that is within our urban growth boundary. So that's one intersection that we do have identified in our T S P currently, as we anticipate needing a traffic signal there. And I don't expect that to change with this T S P update. But part of this process is making sure that ODOT is sufficiently involved and kept up to speed as we update our T S P. And kind of checking in with them on whether or not there are any, there seem to be any like potential roadblocks to the city planning for that improvement to happen, because ultimately ODOT's gonna have to permit that traffic signal to get put in there. And in order for them to, to allow it to get put in, it has to get adopted into their state, what is it, state transportation improvement plan. And in order for it to get into that plan, we have to meet a certain number of trips going through that intersection. So, but, and it has to be in the city's T S P. So we got that down, right? It's in our T S P, we need it, ODOT is aware that it's in our T S P, we just are not yet at that trip count. And unfortunately, we have no control over the thresholds that ODOT will, right, they will tolerate a lot more congestion than most people want to have in their city or on their highway.
That intersection will be built by the state. This is their highway, they will take care of that light.
That is a complicated question. I don't know. It's usually, yeah, there. It depends on, I think it, I think it's a combination of buckets of money. And if the, if the city's able to, if the city's able to generate, you know, through S D Cs or some other, or even, you know, grant. If there's a grant opportunity or something like that, like it could get built by other mechanisms. But if not, then I think have, getting it included in the state's transportation improvement plan is like, that is the the latest possible, like that'll take the longest, basically, but then it gets paid for by the state, I think.
Yeah.
And then, sorry?
The maintenance of it.
Usually there's a, an agreement between the state and the city for the city to maintain the facility to a certain degree. And some of that maintenance, depending on what the maintenance needed is, some of that has to be done by the state.
And, and just kinda bringing us back to this as well too, you know, they're, they're at the table for the transportation plan, so that's ODOT is, that's good. They, they, they're hearing the growth, they know what's going on here. But going back to what you were saying about the role of planning commission is basically to approve, you know, see if it meets the, the subdivisions, the annexations, see if they meet the criteria. We had a great session, I thought, on Monday with city council. We had a city council workshop, it's up on YouTube now, especially for our newer members here. I would encourage you guys checking it out, our, our lawyer met with us and told, talked to us about the rules of the council. And it would extend to the planning commission as well too, when it comes to the land use decisions that, what, what was the word? Our, we, we aren't here to decide, should we grow? We're here as a quasi judicial role. Does the, does the application meet the criteria? And that's, that's the role. But part of the discussion that we had, and it's kinda interesting to hear, is, is what kinds of things can we change? But out of it came, there is opportunity to tighten some of those codes that we have. And that's kinda what we're hoping to accomplish with the joint session coming up here. What, what can we do? What, what is within our control? And it sounds like any comp plan changes that we have need to be approved by the state of Oregon. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but we're limited from that standpoint too. I think as, as Peter said, it's, this is a bad way to put it, but it's stacked against us to turn anything down, because the, the state wants, the, we are in a housing crisis, I think is what's, it's considered. So the state wants growth. We've got the urban growth boundary, so things if, if, if it meets the criteria, it can grow within that. But what can we do as a group to really address the criteria and make sure we got the right criteria in place? And it's a good opportunity for us, I think.
Yeah, and one of the things, one of the things that came up in that conversation is relates to the first item on this list here, which is that currently our approval criteria, so our code requirements for subdivisions or any residential land development are not clear and objective. There's a lot of subjectivity in our code for residential development, and that is illegal. And there are certain parts of our code that if we tried to, you know, impose those requirements, we would be vulnerable to lawsuit. It would get, could get taken to the Land Use Board of Appeals and returned, or Luba will just make the decision for you. And so that is one, that is one big need that I see, right? We're kinda vulnerable to legal trouble if we don't fix our code just to, to meet that minimum legal requirement for residential development. But the other opportunity there is if we, if we are going in and we're gonna update our code to make sure that it is clear and objective as the state defines that, which they do define it. You, I heard this recently from one of the D L C D head honcho guys, is that your code does have to be clear and objective, but that doesn't necessarily mean it needs to be easy or lax, right? You just have to have a clear and objective path for a developer to come in and know how to develop their land. And so there are plenty of cities throughout Oregon who have stricter development requirements. For example, I'm thinking of, I know Sandy has their kind of like Sandy design brand that is adopted into their code, that's more for commercial buildings, but. Yeah, you can increase certain requirements for residential development, but still make them clear and objective and be meeting state law. And so it just might be worth looking into, you know, are we, are we booming with development? And some of that development is not coming in and looking or functioning the way that is appropriate? Well, let's look at our code and see what could be changed to ensure that it actually is kinda meeting the community's hopes and needs for growth.
Have those things been identified?
Some of them have been identified. I mean, some of them, it's really just as we go through and review these subdivision applications. We will struggle to to basic, to identify whether a criteria is met or not, cause the criteria itself is not, it requires discretion. And so there are certain approval criteria that basically we, you know, we come to the public hearings and we're deferring to you all, or we're deferring to the city council to decide whether this criteria is met, cause it's not a clear criteria. So some of those have been identified. I expect there are a lot of code criteria that it just, we just haven't noticed that it's not clear and objective. But some cities will do a clear and objective code audit where they hire a, someone who's more of an expert than me on clear and objective code to come in and go through your whole development code and pick out the pieces that are not clear and objective and propose some changes that would make it more clear and objective. So that's something we could do.
Can we keep moving on down the list?
Sure. The next item on the list is annexation approval processing criteria. Right now, we treat annexations as a land use decision. That means it, it, annexations are regulated within our development code. So any change that we wanna make to the annexation rules has to go through the whole development code amendment process, and similar to comp plan amendments, the state has to approve those amendments. But I learned recently that annexations don't have to be land use decisions. Some cities do not treat them as land use decisions. They park those regulations outside of their development code. And when they do that, they are subject to fewer of the state land use requirements, right? And so you, a lot of you have heard over and over again that the state imposes all these land use laws that kind of limit what we're allowed to do and what we're allowed to approve or deny. And so annexations are one of those types of land use decisions where currently, because it's a, it's a development code review process, we are subject to the state law related to residential development. A bunch of our annexation criteria are not legally applicable as a land use decision. But we can remove that from our development code and apply cri, my understanding, and we should confirm all of this with the city attorney. But I expect we could apply more discretionary criteria to those decisions. So we, I think, could require, you know, school and fire district capacity, which currently we're not allowed to to require that as a condition of annexation approval. So things like that, that would involve doing research into the legal, you know, what would be legal for us to require? And then what would you all and the city council want to change if we did take that out of our development code? And park it somewhere else in our code where we have more discretion on approving annexations? If that's something that the city wants to do, which it has sounded like, sometimes it sounds like that is something the city would like, so. It's on the list.
As I understand it, as the planning commission as a whole, if they're inside this city, urban growth boundary, unless there's, there never been a denial of an annexation for us. We ha, if they meet the criteria, we have no grounds to stand on to deny their application.
Right.
So what I just heard from you was a whole bunch of, how did that tornado get going? We have, we're, we're bound by a set of guidelines that for some reason, they haven't met it and we haven't found it, it's gonna get passed. And so I, I, you know, I was in Lou when we took in a hundred and sixty-some acres all in one shot. I was in shock. I thought, good grief. But it made sense for all of the stakeholders for a one-time shot and everybody join in that wanted to. Which left us with a few islands out here. If I'm wrong, you correct me.
I would, I, that sounds right.
Is we've got the opportunity to address that criteria.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna make it more difficult than what I just heard.
Ben's wheels are turning over there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out. What, well, I won't, I won't go down the rabbit trail, like why, why? What, well, I won't, I won't go down the rabbit trail. Like why, why would we deny an annexation application?
If, for example, if there was a concern that there wasn't enough. That the fire district wouldn't be able to serve the future development. Currently. Because it's, because annexation regulations are parked in our development code. That criteria, which is not clear and objective. And this, this applies to residential land, the clear and objective requirement. And all of the annexations we've had have been residential land. So currently, we're not allowed to consider fire district capacity in annexations. But if we take our, I, my understanding, and so we'd want to, it would involve researching into this. Is that if we take our annexation criteria out of the development code, put it somewhere else. There are still state requirements for annexations, but it, it is not the state land use. It's not under the state land use regulation. So then we could impose requirements like, you know, the city is allowed to deny an annexation application. If they're concerned that there's not enough fire district capacity to serve the future residents or school district capacity. Or, you know, these other districts that are completely out of the city's control currently. Basically, the criteria that we're allowed to apply are wastewater, water, you know. Things that are within the city's jurisdictional authority to control.
All right.
Did you have another?
Well, I. He hit, or you hit on the, on the, the only reasons we could, and that's we're at capacity for our sewer. We don't have enough water to spread it to any more houses. And for, we've got a school that's already filled up and we can't back, you know. We're not going to build anything new in the next year with a hundred and fifty new students. You know, we're, I don't think we can use that one. Although it should be.
Okay.
Yeah. So something to maybe look into. And, you know, once again, that will be a. There's all the research involved. We'll want to look at what other cities do. If, if they're, whichever other cities treat annexations as non-land use decisions. We'd want to look at, kind of look into how that's working for them. Have they had, are there repercussions to that that we would need to consider? And then go through the whole development code amendment process to take that out of the code. So it would be a bit of a process, but it might be worth it if. If that would, you know. Resolve some concerns or, you know, kind of provide a little more local control over the way that the growth is happening. The third one on the list is childcare facilities, which maybe we don't need to talk about because we just did.
Yep.
The fourth one is that park space requirement that doesn't currently exist. It says something in our code like developers are encouraged, but not required to provide park space in subdivisions. So. We've heard from.
That one right there kind of hits me at home because we had a, at one time, say twenty five years ago or more. And we had a twenty acre parcel up here. They wanted to break it down into nine point nine six and nine point eight five or whatever it was. You may remember this. They made it in two parts, but it was one twenty acre parcel. And at that time, if you had twenty acres, brought it in, building it out, you had to provide X amount of park space or playground space. And they did so up there on Reagan, Reagan Hill Heights. There was, I helped build the facility and the fences around. But that seems to have got lost in translation, translation, moving through the process. And Tom Sager and I both knew it, but when you said that it's not in there anymore, we thought, well, when did that happen? We were on the council for twelve or fourteen years and we never saw it go away, but.
So that's something we can revisit to add a requirement like that in there again.
And so when, when a hundred and sixty acres or whatever it was, more than that came in, I thought. Oh, yeah. Okay. So that's how many twenty acre parks? None. And I was blown away.
I, I too would like to support furthering that conversation when the joint council meets for two reasons. Really, it sounds like recently, as I read the newspaper, that the city council was engaged by. The most recent development because of their disapproval of the plan. Of what was intended with pickleball courts and other things into that, which I think ultimately led to the city's decision. To move away from that. Am I saying that correctly?
Campanella to the states.
Correct, yeah. And I would imagine that they. They had the, the right and opportunity to do that because there was a lack of clarity in what stipulates green space. And parks inside of that, which allowed the, which made the city council vulnerable to a judgment call. Because of lack of policy that was created. And correct me if I'm wrong in that, but it puts you guys in a tough spot because of the inability through policy. To rely on that. And then secondly, I would like to have that conversation too, because from the school district perspective. Any type of athletic activity, be that softball, baseball, basketball, youth football and soccer. There is no capacity other than what the school district possesses for children to engage in that play. And we are exceeding capacity in baseball and softball. Our four gyms are maxed until really nine thirty, ten o'clock every single night. I'm sure that you'll start to receive in the future complaints of stadium lights being on, on our new turf field until nine o'clock. Just because of a capacity issue. And so I think it would be the council, the cities and the district's best interest to have a conversation about. What park space should and would look like. And so when the new development comes in, whenever that comes. That there are stipulations that a baseball field or softball sized field or, or some type of athletic fields are also incorporated. Inside those subdivisions, because right now there is no space for that. And that would be an innovative way for us to approach that. And it would support the city council and being able to rely on policies. So you're not beholden to people who just don't like pickleball or the sound. Yeah, pun intended.
Yeah, definitely. And I mean, are the code. The codes sort of flimsy reference or encouragement for parks doesn't even really address. I mean, you, you kind of brought up a good point there. It. Doesn't address much at all, if anything, about like sports fields, right, athletic fields. And that's something that could be. Could be provided for, or you know, just left open park or sports field space or similar facilities, something like that, but yeah.
But that clarity, then I promised to stop. But then, but that clarity is critical. Because all along, we knew that there was going to be a splash pad and other things that were designed for that specific park. And once the people moved into those houses, it was their determination that they didn't want it. And so we had to go back on what the ultimate vision is, creating a sacrifice of what goes into Wade Creek Park. Where it would be to the city and commission's best interests for us to stipulate what that looks like. So then ultimately, when you moved in, you knew that this was going to take place.
I don't think they took it, they didn't take away the open space.
Correct.
They just took away the, I think they had facilities, swing sets, things like that in the pickleball courts. You know. But you're right. If you pin it down, then it's done.
Then it's easy.
That's easy.
The next one. Adopting consistent wetland and creek buffers throughout the city. Currently, we only have in, in two of the newer zones, in the north city residential zone and in the outdoor commercial zone. We do have a creek buffer for Curran Creek. So in those zones, no development is allowed within seventy feet of the mean high water line or something like that. That is the only. Riparian or wetland buffer development prohibition that we have, period. We have a. Quote unquote wetlands over, I mean, we have a wetlands overlay adopted into our code that does not prohibit any. It just says the city will identify where the wetlands are, but it doesn't prohibit any development near those wetlands, right? And so there's just not, other than those two zones, there's not any. Any standards for how close do we want to allow development to the creek? What restrictions on like the types of uses might we want to impose around the creek? And presumably, if you have that buffer adopted in one zone, it's, it's the same creek when you cross the zone boundary, right? And so looking at, do we want to expand those buffers? Just make them citywide? And are there other wetland or creek related? Kind of policies or restrictions that we want to look at?
I think it can kind of be looked at like the childcare system or issue is the state already has. Wetland delineations and different stream types. So I, I don't know if we need to go into specific zones, like you can be seventy feet in this zone, but only forty five in this zone. Whereas if we just say this is a type one fish bearing stream or a. Winter time only creek, that's not the official term, but it, they have different levels.
Seasonal.
Seasonal, thank you. That we would create barriers, buffers based on the stream type. It's like the forest practices in any of the private timber grounds, they have. Buffers that they have to be away from the creek that they can log, how, how close they can log to. And it depends on the size of the stream and what type of fish and endangered species and everything else. So. I think rather than diving in and putting it in each separate code section, just going and figuring out. How those affect us. Clackamas River is going to have a different buffer than current creek. And then the wetland part of it. Obviously, we know where they are. And then there's the. Wetland banks, is that right? Where you can buy a piece of ground elsewhere and say, oh, wow. This is in the city limits and we're going to develop it into industrial. But we have this piece over here in Eagle Creek that's got ducks on it. And so we're going to call that our wetland bank. Kind of like carbon credits on the, on the federal level. But I don't want to get into that, but I mean, but those are the types of things like rather than us diving into the minutia in the code. Just rely on something that already exists and say type one stream is this, maybe consistent. But it's something that needs to be addressed. And we don't have to talk about it every time.
Right.
Hey, I needed to bow out. It felt rude to just leave without saying goodbye, but.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you for your childcare input and the new maps.
Of course, of course. See you.
Bye. Okay, the next one is about lighting regulations. We've gotten complaints, a variety of types of complaints about lighting, whether it's streetlights. Or lights on the sides of buildings that are shining into people's yards. And. Part of the issue is, you know, just creating light pollution. The other part is like visibility and safety concerns. If your streetlights aren't properly hooded, then they can create glare, which makes, actually reduces visibility. And so a lot of cities have standards related to. City, you know, public lighting, so the lights that are actually in the right of way. And some cities also have standards for private properties, you know, that have to hood or shade their lights that are facing out into the right of way. And so that's something that we added to the list. We've gotten a few complaints over the past year or two about lighting issues. And also looking at, I mean, something that we're already looking at with the TSP, for example, is what parts of the city are lacking in any street lighting altogether. So that's something we could include in that exploration. I'm just going to keep going down this list and you should all feel free to interrupt me. Storage standards, we've been having issues with like those Connex storage containers being placed on properties. And we don't have clear code to deal with it. And so that's an issue that comes up in code enforcement a lot. Our code enforcement officer will notice that a Connex storage box has been placed on a property. They need to find out whether it was permitted to be placed there, whether it's even allowed to be placed there by the zone. Is it considered outdoor storage that's unenclosed storage? Or do we consider it enclosed because it's a container? And so this is an issue that lots of other cities have code on. And we, we have a little bit of code, but it doesn't go far enough. So it's something we need to figure out primarily for code enforcement.
Is this on behalf of it that some of them may be covered in graffiti and they're an attract, unattractive nuisance?
That's something to consider when you're deciding what to allow.
Myself, I mean, but.
Right.
Don't know if I'm going to put one in my backyard, just cover up my garbage.
Right. Food carts. Where. We really need, I hope that there's no issue with this. We really need to require food carts to renew their licenses every year. Just like we require annual business license renewals. We're running into tons of issues with food cart licensing because they're not annual. For some reason, when food cart, when the food cart chapter got adopted into the code, I wasn't here. They decided to require a two year renewal. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't happen at the beginning of the year. It happens two years from the time they submitted their application. So it's been a nightmare to track. And there have been other. You know, issues, complaints, primarily complaints about food carts. It just sounds like there are maybe some standards that the council and maybe you all would be interested in updating or changing. Relating to where food carts are allowed to be placed. How close can they be to X? Are they allowed to have a generator? Do they have to, right? So just looking at all those kind of nitty gritty food cart details, taking a, taking a revisit.
Are you picking on the generator?
I'm not picking on anything, except the two year renewal. We don't like that. So, yeah.
You want them in a timely manner at the first of the year, so you don't have to deal with them year round.
Well, it's, it's really because the business license issuance, like they depend on each other. We can't issue one without issuing the other. And, yeah, so I'll leave it there. Administrative stuff.
Common sense.
Yeah. So the next one is RV covers and carport standards. We just don't have standards for this type of structure. And so when someone wants to build one or alter one. That has been an issue with code enforcement primarily. I mentioned the code contradictions. I gave the example of the zone that allows. I think it's maybe self-storage facilities are, or drive-throughs are, are allowed as a conditional use in one of the zones. And they're also listed as a prohibited use, right? So if someone applied for a conditional use permit for that. For a drive-through, we would have, I think we would have to accept that application and the planning commission would have to decide whether it was actually a prohibited use, right? That's wonky. We should make sure not to have that kind of contradiction in there. The next one is adopting an airport plan and airport zone code. The airport plan, it doesn't have to be a separate plan. It would just be a component of our comprehensive plan. It would just be adopting policies. We would probably just copy what the county has. Because it's the same exact airport that's currently, it's the Valley View Airport that's within the county's jurisdiction. And some of you might remember, maybe about a year ago, we had an annexation application. For a property that was outside of city limits. It was designated on our comp plan map for airport zoning to get applied upon annexation. But we don't have airport zoning to match that comp plan designation.
Let it go.
Where did it go?
We, we never.
Yes, we did.
I would love to.
With the parks.
Yeah.
They made a dead zone for building as a flight taking off and coming in, because it was vulnerable to have somebody land on your roof if you built. We did that twenty-five years ago.
Boy, it that exists on the end, on the south end of the runway. A big mound of dirt. Well, that that's why it's theirs.
Yeah, but you remember adopting an airport zone developing.
Bob Beely was the one in charge of that, he wanted it.
Who was that?
Bob Beely owned the airport at that time.
Oh.
Yeah, he hammered it down.
Well, I guess we'll look for that.
Yeah, yeah, we had, we had people from uh all of the FFA and all kinds of letters behind their name and in front. It is amazing to me that you don't have this in your files or a computer somewhere.
Yeah, I will double check.
It's on our list.
Yeah.
That park out there.
Tommy better run, we're good, we're going to be the next hit guys.
Do you have like a range of, do you know what year that whole conversation was?
What would be Bob Beely's name and see when he come to town?
It was, it would have been.
Ninety-five, ninety-six.
I'm going to say after ninety-five, because that's when Tom and I got into this mess, and he was in planning before that.
And he was buying the airport.
He owned the airport.
He owned the airport, he built the housing up there and the whole nine yards.
And so he, there were a bunch of public meetings when he was building the housing up there.
Beverly Beely is still alive, you can tell her, she lives over in Brenda. B E L E Y.
Yeah, I'm just, it wouldn't have been, he wouldn't have had to do anything through the city, because it's not within city limits.
But it was in our urban growth bound.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry about that.
And if I can't find anything, we, anyway, we need to, we need to make sure that something is adopted, meeting the state requirement. We ran into this issue last year, where we have failed to meet this state requirement to adopt an airport plan, just the policies. And um, you know, development code attached to the designation.
It was a long drawn out process. Yeah. Yeah, so what happens?
Um, the state will not allow you to approve land use decisions for a property that is affected by the airport zone designation, if you have not met the requirement of adopting the zoning code related to that, or adopting the policies related to that airport. So we have not adopted the zoning code, I think, I mean, maybe, maybe we'll find it somewhere and it's.
I hope you do, you make me smile if you do.
So we ran into this issue with this property that was zone, that was designated for airport uses, they were coming into city limits, they weren't part of the airport, so we don't really know why they were designated airport, they should have been changed when they partitioned off, um but they were still designated airport, and they wanted to come into city limits and zone change, that's a land use application, they wanted to change their zone to low-density residential, just like all of the properties around it, and that made total sense to us, and we also thought well, that's great, we don't have any airport zone to apply to this property, so if you want a zone change to a zone that we do have, that solves a problem for the city too. Um, but the Department of Aviation, you know, for for that type of application, you have to send notice to the state, because you're amending your conference of plan map.
About three years ago?
And it was like, it was like a year ago.
A year ago?
It's fresh. It's traumatic. The the Department of Aviation got word of that application, because it was airport-related and they um contacted me to let us know, we're not supposed to allow a zone change to residential, and there's all these reasons why, although they weren't, ODA, the Department of Aviation, was not able to point to what um state law prohibited us from approving that land use decision. And neither was DLCD, which is the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, basically the state planning department. Like, those were my two state resources that I was just trying to get a clear answer, can we approve this annexation, can we approve the zone change? If you're saying no, please show me the the state statute that prohibits us from approving it, because if we deny it, the applicant's gonna probably appeal us, take us to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and then if we lose that, then the city is, you know, out, however much that lawsuit costs. Um, so we were just in a really tight spot, because we hadn't met the state requirement, but they weren't able to tell us which one. Anyway, we went through the hearings, we got it approved, it's fine, but we found out after the fact that we found out where the state, that state statute prohibiting us from approving land use applications.
Is that the one that part of the property was outside of the the safety zone?
Yes.
Okay.
So if anyone wants to know more about that, there's too many details about all of the rules that went into that. For and for like a month more, she's still here, maybe she would remember, I'll ask.
Because she was involved in it. Obviously, obviously Denise is, she's retired, so.
Denise was here for this, and she did not seem to think that we had airport zone zoning regulations.
I think Tom and uh Richard want to come down and talk to you tomorrow about this.
Yeah, okay. We're close tomorrow. Um, all right, moving on. Sign standards and permitting process, our sign code is a mess, this is another one that's like mostly an administrative fix that we need for our internal process, but also an opportunity, if we're updating the code anyway. Are there concerns or complaints about the way that signs look in the city, and if so, um, we could address those as we update the sign code.
We talking billboards or just regular street signs?
Any signs.
Any and all.
Well, any and all signs. The next. The next one is um marijuana issues. We have been having complaints um about marijuana odor out in the industrial park. And our odor control standards are not necessarily easy to apply, so we're looking at updating those standards so that it's, once again, this is kind of an internal uh thing, but updating those standards so that it's easier for code enforcement or a building official or the fire marshal to go out there and have the legal authority to inspect, etc. Right. Um, and so in the meantime, once again, if we're going in and updating that code, are there any other changes to the marijuana regulations that you want to look at? Um, the next one is, I don't know anything about this item. This, I think, came from our code enforcement officer wanting to look at garage sale code, the definition, the permit process. Um, there are also building code updates that the state is requiring jurisdictions to make. And then there are some recommended building code updates, we usually just defer to whatever Northwest Code Professionals and the state um building codes division, um we tend to defer to them for all things building. But if there are specific building codes that we want to adopt in addition to what the state requires, we can look at those. But I don't have any recommendations there. Um, looking at fencing in the industrial zone, I think this one, um Melanie was talking about how in the industrial zone there's currently an allowance where you you can have, you can have unenclosed, so outdoor storage accessory to your industrial use. If it is screened from the right of way, and so screening is, you know, you block the view of the thing from the right of way. Um, but that allowance for accessory unenclosed outdoor storage prohibits slatted chain link fencing. And so we've had complaints from some of the users out there, they they want to screen their outdoor storage. But they're not allowed to use slatted chain link fencing, I don't know why. But that's currently prohibited, so rebus.
And take the driver around the phone company, my house, anybody at the school, you're going to find slats, you're going to find chain link, right?
Right, and those are all outside of the industrial zone. So they're allowed.
Would be the difference.
Right. That's the, that's kind of the argument, is why do we prohibit it here, but we don't prohibit it anywhere else? I, I think it's probably prohibited in the downtown zone, because we've got downtown design requirements. But actually, I'm not sure. So, something to look at. Um, the next one is large vehicles and RVs parked in the right of way, again, this didn't come from my department, but I guess we've been having issues with RVs.
Four days.
Being parked, I I'm not sure what the rule is right now, that sounds right, seventy-two hours. Um, unlawful camping and derelict housing. Yeah, so these ones towards the end didn't come from my team, so I can't say much about them, but these would be um actually, these ones towards the end, these are much easier code amendments to make, because they don't have to go to the state um through the development code amendment process, so it would just be a council decision. And then board member ethics, ADU standards, I don't remember why that one was on this list. ADU is accessory dwelling unit, and we did just update some of the ADU related standards with our housing amendments. So maybe that one is just still on the list as a vestigial item. Um, fire-related building and development code amendments, this came up, um this is like a wildfire-related changes, so are there building code or development code changes that we could make to reduce the um vulnerability of our structures, the vulnerability to wildfire risk, basically.
Who's they know?
What's that?
Can I say no?
Sure.
Well, it it's all in the building code. Didn't the state of Oregon address this, like, weren't they changing some standards?
And then they got a bunch of lawsuits filed against them, and they pulled back on it. So it's something we don't even want to wait.
Okay.
They had, they had the whole wildfire overlay that they did, and everybody's insurance went through the roof for a minute. And all the insurance companies said, you can't do this, so that's why everybody's pulling back on it, and the state said, pump the brakes, and now everybody's off.
Right.
And then anything outside of a city is in the uh wild and urban interface, and it has specific standards you have to do, which are related to the state planning standards, like EFU and timber zones, any of the bigger ag forestry zoning types have specific setbacks, uh fire sprinklers sometimes, metal roofs. That kind of stuff.
Right.
Doesn't belong in the city, doesn't belong in the city municipal building code.
One thing um that would be a development, would involve the development code indirectly um is that with our TSP, Transportation System Plan update, we are going to look at um evacuation routes. And so when you identify a certain route or a certain project in your TSP, that means that when a subdivision comes in for development, they have to dedicate enough right of way in order to provide for that facility to get built, so that's just one, one small thing that ultimately comes in with development, sounds like maybe the building related.
I guess we can leave it on the list, and if somebody has any questions, I'd invite them.
Yeah. Yeah, we should probably, I think that that, um I think that Elena, the Assistant City Manager, and maybe she was working with Alan on this. I'm not sure, but I know that Elena was um involved with something related to wildfire, wish I could say more. Tree planting requirements and or protections for certain existing trees. I think this came up in a council meeting recently, so we added it to the list. Um, and then flagpole lot code standards and setback requirements, we've had some development on flagpole lots where um it's the developer wanted to orient the house kind of sideways, and it did make, you know, it makes sense to us for the site, but we don't have clear code on requiring the house to face a certain way, and is there a preference on the planning commission or the council for there to be orientation standards for flagpole lots? And that is the non-exhaustive list of code issues, that some of which you might want to discuss with the city council. And if there's any more, um yeah, if you want to talk about any of that further, any of the things that I do know about, uh we're happy to talk to you whenever, whenever we're working. Um, and we won't be at City Hall tomorrow, but next week.
So.
Say one thing.
Go ahead.
You've done a magnificent job getting us through this.
That it?
Couldn't do it, couldn't do it without my planning staff buddies, so.
So we, we just went through twenty-three pretty big ticket items. I don't think there's any way that, when you get us and city council together, that we're going to be able to go through twenty-three big ticket items in anything less than an eight-hour day.
Right.
So maybe we should um, and I'm just floating this out here, maybe put together a list of like, rank the top five and see which ones kind of float up. And maybe we attack those five, and then we can kind of revisit in time down the road, or maybe it's, I don't know what the magical number is.
Yeah, I mean, would, if any of you would be feel prepared to just circle your top five right now, we could take your paper, otherwise, yeah, we could um follow up.
You think five is a reasonable number? Six, eight. Twenty-three, and some of them, like, we can kind of squeeze that. But I think some of them are worthy of our discussion in themselves.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so to clarify, your homework is um rank your, the top five issues from that code issue list that you hope to talk about at the joint workshop with the city council. And if there's something that's not on that list that you would like to talk about, just write, you can do write-in.
Okay.
Oh, there was another thing. I can't remember if we put this on your agenda, I wanted to check with you all about your next meeting. The timing, um your regular February meeting would be scheduled for the fourth Thursday, so it would be Thursday, February twenty-third. Um, we don't actually have any land use applications submitted.
I'll get one.
So and if we needed a twenty-day notice, I don't think they'll have a meeting, because, no, okay, you're not going to have a meeting on the twenty-third. You'll just have the joint workshop on the twenty-seventh, unless you want to, unless you want to have a planning commission meeting on the twenty-third to discuss, you know, to have discussions like we did tonight. But um for our new, for our new people, usually uh planning commission meetings involve one or more public hearings on a land use application, or a public hearing on a code amendment or a comprehensive plan amendment, right? It's usually a public hearing, and sometimes there's other types of discussions, so tonight was a little unique in that aspect. But there's no, there's no public hearing that will happen at your next, that would, that would have happened on the twenty-third, so we can go ahead and.
The one time of the twenty-seventh's joint.
It's happening instead of their, I believe it's, we're planning on that meeting to happen instead of their regular meeting, but maybe, maybe we can still start it earlier. No, 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 the joint workshop meeting on the twenty-seven.
That Monday?
Yeah, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday. It's.
I didn't get back to uh something.
It looks like it's at seven, I'm going to confirm that, would, would you all be, would you all? It looks like it's at seven, I'm gonna confirm that, would, would you all be, would you all prefer or not prefer for it to start at six? Is that worse for anyone if it started at six on a Monday?
I like seven, but.
Seven's great, but I can handle it.
Sounds like seven o'clock.
Majority rule.
Yeah, okay, so we'll push for seven o'clock on February, Monday, February twenty-seventh, and we'll send out reminders. And no planning commission meeting on the twenty-third, we will also send you a reminder about that.
Not to be too picky, but could you send us, like, in a pretty easy format of the top twenty-four or twenty-three? That we can just reply individually to Ryan and you?
Yes, so we'll email you that list of code issues, and then. We'll remind you the prompt, please pick your, let us know what your top five are, ideally, you would rank them, like, my most important issue is number one. Next most important number two, and I'll put this all in the email, and then we'll also remind you, if there's anything not on the list that you know you wanna discuss, please let us know that too. Um, and then we'll include the reminder about. Your regular meeting being canceled and your upcoming joint workshop.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.